So just give you a second to find your seat and we'll get him to move on here. Sounds like parking was a little bit of an issue and we're sorry about that. It's a busy place of the club here. First of all, I'd like to welcome you all to tonight's primary candidate forum. The forum tonight is sponsored by the Snoqualmie Valley Chamber of Commerce in collaboration with the Snoqualmie Valley Record, our proud media sponsor. Together, we create these forums, the purpose of which is to give the candidates the opportunity to explain their position on the issues and to provide the public the opportunity to compare and contrast the candidates. And that is our goal tonight. My name's Carolyn Simpson and I serve as president of the Chamber of Commerce. Candidate forums are one of the many ways that the Chamber serves the community. Will the members of the Chamber board here tonight, I know we have a lot, please just stand so we can recognize you. This group of people really does an awesome job for the community. And we're representatives from our fabulous, absolutely fabulous partner, the Snoqualmie Valley Record, could stand and be recognized. This is Carol Laber, Mayor of Snoqualmie. And my partners in this. Now please help me welcome all of the candidates here tonight, participating in what is promised to be a grueling round of questions. It takes guts to stand up and run for public office and we salute you all. Will the candidates participating in tonight's forum please stand whether you're on the stage or whether you're at the mayor's race waiting to go on the stage? And let us welcome you and thank you for being here. We really do appreciate it. Tonight's primary candidate forum has broken into two parts, as you probably already know. One is for the Snoqualmie City Council position number two and one is for Snoqualmie Mayor. And this is a primary because there's more than two candidates for each of those spots. The purpose of the primary on August 1st is to narrow that down to two candidates for the general election. Each of these two forums will feature three sections: a short, and I emphasize "short", opening statement, a long section of questions and answers, and closing statements. Tonight, audience applause is welcome in the opening and closing statement sections of the forum, but for the sake of the fact that we have very limited time and we also want to allow the opportunity for the candidates or the audience to hear the questions and answers, we will not be allowing audience applause or displeasure during the question and answer section. To be honest, we're not going to tolerate it because we do actually have a tight agenda tonight. It's important that we as citizens and candidates have the opportunity to explain their answers. The questions for the forum tonight were developed via multiple outreach efforts by the Snoqualmie Valley Record and the Snoqualmie Valley Chamber. We worked together to accumulate those, find common themes, and create a script for tonight's forums. This was top secret work and the candidates have not seen the questions. That makes it the grueling part. As our moderator tonight asks the questions, you will be notified at the beginning, this is for the candidates. As our moderator asks each question, you'll be notified at the beginning of the question whether you have a one-minute or a two-minute answer. Most of them are one minutes, but there are several two minutes. A timekeeper, and we're going to show you some examples, will flag you with a yellow card when there are 20 seconds left and a red card when you're out of time. We really hope that you can help honor the time limit so we can get through all the questions tonight. We don't want to have to come grab the mic from you. Most of the questions we ask tonight will be asked of all of the candidates in the same race. And we are doing our very best, we have a plan to rotate who answers first, who answers last, and what direction we go across the table, it'll be super fair. That's our goal tonight. Some of the questions will be called to section "In Your Own Words," and those questions were developed based on information on the candidate's website, in their voter's pamphlet statement, the Snoqualmie Valley Record interviews, living Snoqualmie statements, or public positions taken in other public places. Candidates, including the ones in the audience. Are there any questions on the format? Okay. It's my pleasure then, tonight, to introduce our moderator, my friend and Snoqualmie resident, Clayton Fong. Clayton has a long history of senior management positions in government service. He worked for a US President and a Governor of California. In the White House, he served as part of White House Presidential Personnel as the Deputy Assistant to the President for Public Liaison. And he also served in Washington as the Deputy Director of the US Office of Consumer Affairs. Clayton was the Governor of California's liaison to the Asian Pacific American Communities and is currently the owner of CSM Strategy Communications. Here at the club at Snoqualmie Ridge, Clayton is known as a talented golfer, a loyal friend, and a great conversationalist in the clubhouse. Will you please all join me in welcoming our moderator tonight, Mr. Clayton Fong?
Thanks Carolyn. Just so you guys see, I actually do have a face. I thought I could just a little bit to face you guys. Actually, there's something really false here. I'm not a talented golfer, but thank God there's a handicap system. I did want to share with you the question that this tough panel vetoed, they won't let me ask, so I was going to share it with you guys. And that is, I was gonna ask, my first question was gonna be, has anyone here spoken with any Russians, Chinese, or other foreign agents? But they said that wasn't fair. So anyway, we're gonna have some questions that were a little more fair and a little more topical. With that, we'll get started on the program. Candidates, welcome. I noticed we're missing a candidate. His name's Tong, my name's Fong, maybe I should sit up there.
I can answer for him.
Are you?
I can answer for him.
He gets up with the time that way, I like that. Well, actually that might help us make up a little time. I do want to say this, in case you're a little nervous, politics can be grueling, but it should be fun, so let's just have some fun in it, okay? This is the opening statement section. You have a very short 20-second opportunity to say why are you voting, what do you want to do, why are you running for this office? So just introduce yourself real quickly and in 20 seconds, one sentence, say why you're voting, why you're running for office. And we'll start with Ms. Shepherd.
I'm Leslie Shepherd, I'm a mother of four, and I'm running to represent the many voices of residents whose vision of Snoqualmie differs either in large or small parts from that of the city's current agenda and the city's future plans.
Okay. I'm Catherine Ross and I was unanimously appointed to the city council in May, ex-April, sorry. My family and I have lived in Snoqualmie for over 13 years and I've spent most of my time volunteering in our community. I am a board member of Compas and was president of the board, and I have served on the Snoqualmie Library Board, Human Services City Committee, and the City Council's Academy. City council matters to Snoqualmie's economic growth and our quality of life and its future. I believe my leadership role, volunteering, work experiences, and education have prepared me to lead us through this growth, to be an effective and effective council member. Thank you.
All right, that was 20 seconds, but it was more than one sentence. But that's okay? Only kidding, guys. Okay, now we get to the guts of the program, or the heart of the program, and that is the Q&amp;A section. And why it's the heart is because the questions here are actually from residents, mostly from readership of our newspaper. And what I wanted to do was just though to make it clear to the audience, this is the one section we're gonna ask that you not applause for time management reasons. And basically, each question will be to both of you, except for the "In Your Own Words" question, which will be directed at one candidate. I do want to just remind you that we've got the timekeepers and I will state if it's a one-minute or two-minute question, and please be conscientious of when they say it's one minute, two minutes, 20 seconds left. So the first question, the question is voting as a coalition, and it is a one-minute answer, okay? Running for office, you've got to have your own opinions, your own positions, your own priorities. But in this case, we actually have a coalition running called Snoqualmie First. And what our, this question is, and then we also have four, maybe five candidates who are incumbent. And so the question really about voting in a coalition is this: in general, and on the council often, there's sort of a pressure to kind of be unanimous before you get to the public meeting, or to vote as a coalition unconditionally. And the question that I'm gonna pose on behalf of readers is, one, comment on this, and that is that in an open meeting, really that deliberation should happen in public, so it's important that that sort of be done quietly. In the old days, we called it in the old cigar smoke filled rooms. Or secondarily, are you gonna be a rubber stand for a coalition? So what I'd like is for you to comment on kind of that notion of coalition, believe. Give me a second.
Okay. I was appointed to be council member because I have a great background, my education, I have BA, I have 13 years of work experience, and 13 years of volunteering in the community. And they chose me because of good night experience. And everything I do, I totally research things, you see a lot of paper out here, I totally research things, I ask questions, I welcome listening to our citizens, and I deliberate on what the issues are until I thoroughly understand what the issues are and then I make a decision and vote. I don't vote with, well, last night we talked about the noise ordinance and, you know, I had already decided that based on, I can't sleep down this thing after 11 PM, listen to noises, and so I voted against it. So I don't vote with the group, I vote based on the importance of the issue.
Thank you. Ms. Shepherd?
Well, I am part of that Snoqualmie First coalition and I'm really proud of the work that we've done so far to date with that coalition. I can tell you with absolute certainty that even though we are a coalition, we disagree on things. But what we do agree on, the two things we do agree on, is that our growth needs to be managed differently than it's being managed now. And the other thing is we all see a number of opportunities for improvement. But, I'll give you an example. I love the idea of the Riverwalk, but Kristy Copping, who lives downtown and a longtime resident, she's not in favor of the Riverwalk. We have also differences in opinions about healthcare and budgeting, but the two main things we care about the most, we do agree on. But I don't ever see us voting in lockstep and being a bunch of nodding heads.
All right, the next question is about budget and it will be a one-minute answer. If Snoqualmie finds itself in a budget deficit after we build out all of the Snoqualmie Ridge new homes, what changes to city operations and planning would you propose to turn things
First of all, I see an unbalanced budget, except in extreme circumstances, as a failure of government. Cities should always start with a balanced budget and work out from there. You should not start with a deficit and try to build your way out of debt. What I want to see though, instead of building, 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 is I want us to work and lift up our current retailers. If they succeed, we succeed. Right now, they're having trouble with vacancy turnover and the fact that tourism is only a couple months out of the year. So I want to work with them to help them boost their sales so we can boost our sales taxes. There are also another, many opportunities for improvement in the budget, in studying the budget. I think there's some things that we could definitely trim under the budget. So, and our tax, our tax, excuse me, real estate taxes are increasing, so we should be getting some great money for our coppers that we should save for those rainy days.
We currently have a balanced budget. Within a year or so after our impact fees have gone away, they are looking at a potential million-dollar gap. And we can, economic development would be key to that. We have so many visitors that come to Snoqualmie every year, and by having them, capturing the $200,000, we can close that budget, or close the gap. So if they stay overnight, for instance, you earn $45,000 in revenue by having them stay here, eat dinner, do their shopping. And right now, they're projecting, like the Hilton Hotel, for instance, once it's built, will put in, will get almost $300,000 in VNO tax, and sales tax. The Safeway alone is going to bring in about $460,000. So you're gonna start filling the gap by having economic development.
There we go. Next question is on homeless and drug addiction. It is a one-minute answer. Does Snoqualmie have a problem with homelessness and drug addiction? And if so, how would you help to address the problem and how would your plan impact
I have spent my time devoting, my volunteer time, to founding children in the valley. And human services is very important. The city don't, allocate 1% of their general budget to different nonprofit organizations every year. And they donate it to human services organizations, provide services to our Snoqualmie residents. And some of those are to friends of youth, which help with mental health issues and homelessness and drug addiction, and to the food bank to buy the food, and Compas for early learning. And so there is youth homelessness and drug addiction in the valley, and once you have it in one area, you're gonna have it in our area. You can have it in Snoqualmie, you can have it in Paul City, and you can have it in North
Okay. I think that one of the best ways to avoid additional homelessness and drug use is to keep your kids and most importantly, entertain your active. One thing I have noticed that is lacking in Snoqualmie is things to do, good activities for teenagers. We hit it out of the ballpark for younger children, but we need more programs for teenagers. And part of that would be, of course, adding the Y skate park is gonna be coming in, I would like to see a pool, I would like to see other things to work with our teenagers to do this. I think if there's anything that you should maybe increase budget spending, it would be to help the welfare of the very children and teens in your neighborhood. We have a lot of...
Okay, this is the first of our "In Your Own Words" questions. So it will be directed at one candidate, and this one is for Catherine Ross. It's a two-minute answer. You've stated that you want to, in quotes, "strengthen Snoqualmie's partnerships with human service organizations by increasing city revenues through economic development that respects and enhances Snoqualmie as a premier destination, a place to live." How would you do this and can you give us an example or two to explain this?
So that gets back to human services funding. So currently, we do, mentioned earlier, 1% of our current general funding, 1% of our general fund is allocated to human services. If you increase economic development, you're gonna have more revenues, you actually have more funds that you can allocate to human services. But economic development also brings jobs, and so you can provide more jobs to those that need employment through retail or working at restaurants, et cetera.
For the record, that was less than two minutes first time. Only kidding. Next question is a one-minute answer and it is about our community center. It's for both candidates. Snoqualmie's very proud of its extremely popular center operated by the Y on the ridge, but the building is literally bursting at the seams. At the same time, the idea of a community pool is still often discussed by a lot of residents. And so this question would be, would you support putting a bond measure on the ballot to expand the community center? And how would you go about making that decision?
Absolutely, I'm glad you brought that up because one of the things my friends and moms in particular say to me is, Leslie, if you win, can you guess? And so my job, if I made on council, is to vote whether or not to put the bond on the ballot, but, and I would love to have that opportunity. However, it's ultimately in the hands of the people, because I can only vote to put the bond on the ballot. But if the people of Snoqualmie, you have to have 60% vote to pass capital projects. It's ultimately up to the people of Snoqualmie if they want that pool. I would personally love to see it happen, but it's not about me, it's about what Snoqualmie
So my daughter Ariel swam for Mount High School and we were able to use the TCC pool. They swim until November outdoors, because it's very cold, but it doesn't allow our, the boys team to swim, because they're driving to the plaza and off to the rent. And also, liaison to the Y. So every time I talk to someone about expansion of the Y, they're, everyone's suggesting that they would like to see a pool. So I think that a bond measure for a pool would be effective.
Okay, the next question is about affordable housing and it is a one-minute answer. What do you believe is the city's role in providing affordable housing for low-wage earners, young people, an aging population, longtime residents? And how would you propose to address these concerns?
So affordable workhouse housing, to provide homes for those that are employed by local industries. My daughter's dad, they had teachers that would drive from West Seattle every day to school because they couldn't afford to live here. And so having affordable housing would allow our teachers, our bankers, people that work in local industries, to be able to live where they work and rent our community full-time. Right now, there's over 2,800 employees that commute to Snoqualmie every day for their jobs. And so it's important for us to be able to provide or to approve affordable workhouse
Affordable housing is absolutely necessary for a vibrant, diverse, and livable community. I actually was a consultant for an affordable housing developer in Southern California. The role of the city is that we have to make sure it's done right. So we have to, by state law and state mandate, build housing. But as a city, we can make sure it's done right. Unfortunately, I think it hasn't been done and managed all that well up to this point. So instead of when we built, for example, metalwork apartments, instead of 100 apartments and 15 of those need to be reserved for affordable housing and reduced rent, we let the developer just develop whatever they want, and now we have a project that's left at the end of 191 units that is creating a lot of newbie backlash. So as a city council member, I would make sure that affordable housing in the future is done correctly and creatively.
Next question is about growth and it is a two-minute answer. This is really a two-part question. What is your position on whether Snoqualmie needs to grow in the areas of residential housing and commercial businesses, employers? And how can the city best balance the rights of property owners to develop the land they legally own versus the city's desire to manage growth?
First of all, I want to make real clear that I am not immigrant. I also want to say that I firmly believe that most of the residents in Snoqualmie are not immigrant. But what I will say is there's no gold medal for a city who hasn't had its growth. The world is littered with cautionary tales of a growth happening too quickly. When growth is too quick, you have a lot of lost opportunities. For example, the broadband initiative, the conduit was laid, but we didn't pull fiber into the neighborhoods, into the retail district and into the office district. I think that was a lost opportunity. I already mentioned affordable housing, I think it could have been done a little bit better. When growth is too quick, you also can harm the very businesses that are providing community, incentive community, and sales tax revenues. I don't understand why the city right now is proposing tens of thousands of square footage of new retail and new retail destination centers when our current retailers are struggling to pay the rent and they're struggling to stay in business year-round. When growth is too quick, you get traffic congestion, enough said. When growth is too quick, you can get fined, for example, from the Puget Sound Regional Council. And most importantly, after going around knocking on many, many, many doors, I believe that by and large, the residents of Snoqualmie do not like the direction that the city is currently taking. How do you resolve this? Well, that's a pretty easy answer. You take a step back and you slow down growth. I would like to see residents having projects above a certain size go to vote. So it's not just the city deciding, it's the residents deciding what they want to see and where they want to see it.
Sure. What's your position on Snoqualmie's needs to grow in the air, or, what is your position on Snoqualmie growth in the areas of residential housing and commercial business development? How can the city government best balance the rights of property owners to develop land they legally own versus the city's desire to manage growth?
So Seattle was the fastest-growing city last year by 2%. There's 52,000 people that moved in there and you're gonna see the growth coming out to the east side and also to Snoqualmie. And so I think growth is inevitable, it's just how do we tend to grow. And I know that, you know, we talked about affordable housing, it would be affordable housing for employees to live here. We have to talk about the different things that are happening regarding economic development, so, such as the melt site. There's over 2 million visitors that come here annually, we need to capture the $200,000 and so that we can diversify our revenue and take pressure off the property taxes.
Okay, this is the second of our "In Your Own Words" questions. So this one is from Ms. Shepherd. Okay. Your website, when you look for your website, it actually goes to the Snoqualmie First Coalition. And that's kind of unusual in the world of campaign politics to have candidates share sites, locations, and what have you. So the question for you is, what is the relationship between the Snoqualmie First organization and your campaign? And how are you differentiated between the other five candidates that share that site? Do you share resources, endorse, and how do you fund?
Well, first of all, I don't have my own website because I have four kids and I'm not a professional politician. So we hang out and put our brains together and see what we can do and what we can share. We are all self-funded. So, you know, we are paying for our own signs, our own, you know, printing paper, all that kind of stuff. So we're all self-funded. It's funny, I mean, I just, we ran as a coalition because we thought that is going to be the best way to make change happen. And again, we don't agree on everything, but there are plenty of things we do agree on. And I remember sitting at the Black Dog Cafe and we were all chatting and we had to come up with the very things that we do agree on. So we did, we came up with the four or five things that we definitely agree on and we go for them, but all of us are individuals, all of us are individuals. And I love being part of... So Tom Wood is very good at, he worked in hydroelectricity, so he knows about, like, water and water, and if we have enough water here and how we can get water. So by pooling all of our resources and our knowledge together, I think we are better as a coalition than we are as one.
Okay. Next question is about the mill site, and that's a one-minute question. There's a mill site development in Snoqualmie, and what we wanted to ask you is, what do you see as the advantages for the city from its potential development? And what are your main concerns in the process of moving forward? And please include in your answers how the public should be involved.
Okay. So the mill site would be a place for our 2 million visitors to visit for restaurants, wine tasting, and different type of events. It would also provide employment and also workforce housing, so people that work there can actually live there. It would generate revenue for the city, I think, of projecting, like, you know, close to $370,000 starting in 2020 if it is built at that point. So things to consider, though, they're working on environmental impact data at this point, which the Department of Ecology would have to sign off on. They're doing a comprehensive study to generate to look at the infrastructure, such as water, sewer, utility, and ultimately do a traffic study, et cetera. So there's different things that we should consider, and there'll be public meetings, there'll be public scan, provide a contingency regarding the mill site.
I believe that the mill site never should have been annexed by the city in the first place. By annex, and we did not do a complete environmental report. We just took into the city and put on the taxpayer's backs a massively contaminated property. It is the second most contaminated property in Washington State beside Hanford, excuse me, second to only the Hanford. I think that this site should be remediated and changed to help the flooding that occurs from this site. And left alone, we are at the top of the watershed for the entire region. If something happens with this site, with the contamination of PCVs and coal ash, all that's gonna run, flow downhill into the other cities.